Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, 6:00 PM. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation from Pastor William Johnson from the Revival Tabernacle Church at 2226 Jefferson Drive, I'd appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for coming. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, that's so much better. I can actually hear myself. Thank you so much. I'll make this as short as I can. Precious Lord, we thank you for all of the city leaders here tonight. I ask special prayer today for divine protection, for our police, for our fire department, emergency medical responders, and of course, the military personnel in our area here. And Lord, please give our city council guidance as they endeavor to meet the needs of the community of Bellevue. We know that a lack of guidance causes a nation to fall, but victory is won through many advisors. Lord, let us not be misguided in this meeting so that we do not lead to decisions that produce ineffective results. I pray that you direct our steps so that this meeting can achieve the best possible results concerning the needs of this great city. We place you at the center of all that we do here today. These things I pray, in Jesus' name. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order with roll call. Susan, would you take that, please?
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda: Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. 5A is Approval of the Agenda. Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda with one exception. I would include moving 11A to just before item 17 on the agenda, so that item 11A would be the last agenda item.
Does that require a second?
I think we should do a motion to approve the agenda first, and then a second discussion, and then amend.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Preister, seconded by Burns.
And then you can make an amendment if you want.
And then, Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to amend the agenda to move item 11A to the end of the agenda, to just prior to item 17, Administration Report. Second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Stinson to amend the agenda, moving item 11A right before item 17?
Correct.
Councilwoman Welch?
I also have a motion to amend. I'd like to pull number 10 per the applicant's request.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
So, let's take the item 11A, the amendment to move 11A before 17. We have a motion by Preister, seconded by Stinson. Is that correct?
Mayor, let's do the motion to amend 10 first, since that was the last amendment on the floor.
Okay. We will take the motion by Welch and seconded by Cook to remove item 10 from the agenda. Any questions on that one? Please vote.
Does that mean we want to do approve the agenda?
Does it? We'll do it as an amendment. All voted yes?
Thank you. Now we'll take the amendment to move item 11A right before item 17. We had a motion by Prei- or motion by Preister, seconded by Stinson. Any questions?
Just to clarify the amendment, was your amendment to move it before 17 Administration Reports?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be the last item on the agenda.
So, before 19 or before 17?
We amended the agenda. I'm not getting my computer to pull that up.
So...
Item 17 is the Administration of Reports.
Yeah, and 19's adjournment. So, do you want it before 17 or 19? Which one was your amendment?
Well, I need it before 18, so we can do the Administration Report and then between 17 and 18.
So, after 17?
Okay.
Okay.
Between 17 and 18.
Okay.
So, it would be a new 18.
So, Preister's amended Stinson. You okay to second?
I think you're wanting it after the executive session, correct?
We have discussion right now on the amendment, so you guys can discuss wherever you want.
Are you wanting it before, after we discuss legal matters? Yeah. Yes, I think you're right, as I think about it. So, it would be... After 18, before 19. Yes, after 18 and before 19.
So, do you want to withdraw your amendment and then make a different amendment to get it correct?
Sorry, for the confusion, I will withdraw my amendment if the second is withdrawn.
Stinson.
Councilman Stinson.
Okay, then I would move to amend to place item 11A after item 18. And I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to move item 11A to after 18 and before 19. And a second by Stinson. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right. Any questions on that? Please vote.
Got five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Shannon voting.
Okay, amendment passes, so we are back to 5A, which is Approval of the Agenda as amended. We had a motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Are there any questions on that? Please vote.
All voted yes.
That was fun. A year and a half, I don't think I've amended the agenda yet. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, and then I would like to make an amendment. I probably would just tell you that I want to remove it, right?
You don't have to make an amendment to remove something off the consent agenda. So, you just make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
And I would like to remove under claims, the claim under legal Erickson and Cedarstrom for professional fees.
Okay, let me back up. You would just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So, we have motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Now we have discussion.
And then you can just ask to remove the claims in its entirety off of, if that's what you want to do. You don't have to have a motion for it.
I just want to remove the legal Erickson, Cedarstrom, professional services.
It'd be cleaner to just remove the whole claims.
Okay, I'll remove the whole claims.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by, is there any other items? Any council members would like removed? There's only one left. Item, let's see, item 5B was a motion by Cook, seconded by Preister to approve the consent agenda with the claims removed. So, please vote.
All voting yes.
All right, thank you. Moves us to item number seven, Special Removal of the Claims. Thank you. Item number six. Okay, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would ask that our city administrator, Jim Risto, explain the professional services.
Can we have a motion so we can have a discussion?
Yes. I'll make a motion. We approve the claims.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor McWay.
Okay, motion by Cook, seconded by Preister.
I'd just like to have our city administrator, Mr. Risto, explain the professional services on our claims today.
I believe it's an $8,800 cost. Our legal department, Bree specifically, has been named as a, what's the right language I want to use?
Defendant.
Defendant in a legal matter. City Councilman Pat Shannon has named Bree as the defendant in a lawsuit against the city, so Bree has to conflict out and not represent the city. So, we contracted outside legal, which would be Erickson and Cedarstrom to represent the city through that matter. That's the $8,800.
Thank you.
Any other questions on claims? We have a motion by Cook, seconded by Preister to approve the claims. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Now we can go to seven, Special Presentations. 7A is Proclamation Declaring September as National Library Card Signup Month, and... Come up to the podium and read it. Right, it is not working, so bear with me. Proclamation, Library Card Signup Month 2020, whereas a library card is the most essential school supply of all, whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children, whereas libraries offer a variety of programs to stimulate an interest in reading and learning, whereas library resources serve students of all ages from early literacy to STEAM programs, STEAM programs to research databases, whereas signing up for a library card is the first step of the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, whereas a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond, whereas librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another, whereas a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests, whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding services to meet the evolving needs of their communities. Therefore, it is resolved that I, Mayor Rusty Hike, proclaim September Library Card Signup Month in the city of Bellevue and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to, is Tom Dergie here? Say chief. Officially, I can still say chief Dergie if you'd come forward, please, and I just want to, Jim and I would like to thank you. Come on up, Jim. Actually, that writing, um, if you want to read that? This is better. All right, so the inscription just says, "Thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Bellevue and your leadership of the Bellevue Police Department during a time of transition. Your contributions are greatly appreciated."
Thank you.
And it's been a tough stint there. So, Tom got us through the COVID, stepped in and took us right through COVID and some protests, and did a great job, and appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to say really quick, I appreciate the backing of the administration and the council and everything, but while I did get this, I also have a great command staff that helped me through all this, and then last but not least, all the officers that every day do great things. Thank you.
I just, I'm going to add this, that while Tom got us through harrowing time too, is that Tom also, top-flight captain, could potentially be our chief, sacrificed applying for that position to see us through this and sat on the sidelines, but Tom, as well as your staff, your command staff, have a great deal of respect for you and your staff, and I appreciate everything you've done and your sacrifice to see us through this time and sit on the sidelines too. So, again, a lot of people know that, that it's a big sacrifice for you two, so, thanks, Tom.
All right, thank you.
So, next step, we are going to swear in our new police chief, Ken Clary. His wife, Jody, is in the audience, and Jim's done most of the talking with him, so I just want to let Jim say a few words, and then I'll do the swearing in.
So, first of all, Ken, I just want to make sure that we get this right when I'm driving through Iowa in the future, that you'll see, make sure I won't get tickets going to... But I didn't find out he's a Vikings fan, but I'm sure there's no help there, but it was, it's been an eight-month journey for us to get to this. We went through 20 candidates, quite a process to get to the finalists. Ken was one of the finalists in the three, and the cream truly rises to the top. We're absolutely thrilled that Ken's joining our team here. His leadership style, his management skills, and the ability to lead this team is, we're excited to see what happens here, and we're looking forward to a good future with Ken here. So, I won't belabor that much, but we're glad to have you part of our team, so.
It's up to her.
Come on up.
That's the other half.
Yes, my wife, Jody. Okay, raise your right hand. "I, Ken Clary, do solemnly swear..."
"I, Ken Clary, do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska..."
"...that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Nebraska..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion..."
"...or without mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the position of police chief..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially fulfill the duties of the position of police chief..."
"...according to law and to the best of my ability..."
"...according to law and to the best of my ability..."
"...and I do further swear that I do not advocate..."
"...and I do further swear that I do not advocate..."
"...nor am I a member of any political party..."
"...nor am I a member of any political party..."
"...or organization that advocates..."
"...or organization that advocates..."
"...the overthrow of the government of the United States..."
"...the overthrow of the government of the United States..."
"...or the s-" "...or of this state by force or violence..."
"...or of this state by force or violence..."
"...and that during such time..."
"...and during such time..."
"...as I am in the position, I will not advocate..."
"...that I am in the position, I will not advocate..."
"...nor become a member of any political party..."
"...will not advocate or become a member of any political party..."
"...or organization that advocates..."
"...or organization that advocates..."
"...the overthrow of the government of the United States..."
"...the overthrow of the government of the United States..."
"...or of this state by force or violence..."
"...or of this state by force or violence..."
"So, help me God."
"So, help me God."
New badge.
Very nice.
Chief, Bellevue, Nebraska.
Absolutely.
It's better than your wedding.
Don't forget the boss.
You need a second badge.
And I've had that badge for two hours this afternoon, so you may or may not be getting called. Would you like to say something?
Just a couple of words, if I might. You can say it if you'd like. I know she, I know that was her least favorite thing to do. So, not standing by my side, but standing in front of a crowd. So, first of all, I want to thank Tom, if he's still here, for leading the way over the last eight months, filling that gap. Obviously, not an easy thing to do during the transition in times that we have not seen in law enforcement, arguably ever. I also want to thank the mayor, Mayor Hike, and city administrator Risto, the city council, for this opportunity and the faith you have shown in me to do the job. Honored to be chosen to serve the great men and women of the department, as well as the amazing and vibrant community of Bellevue. Actually, looking back at 26 years of law enforcement service, there are countless leaders, coaches, mentors, teams that have lifted me up. They truly deserve the credit for the successes that I've achieved, but there are too many to name tonight, I will say, but without the support of my wife, my family, and those people, I wouldn't be standing here today. So, it's truly their credit that I'm here. I do look forward to working to provide the support, the training, the equipment, that, and did I mention support? That these men and women who dedicated their lives to service deserve, it's truly about supporting them so that they can provide the best service that they can to the community of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. It's exciting to have you here, just the interview that I had with you. I think you're going to fit great into the team, and I think you're a great addition to the city of Bellevue, so we'll look forward to the next, how many years? Welcome. Welcome, Jody. All right, nine approved citizen communications. We have none. 10 is removed, and 11 has been moved, so we're at 11B. Ordinance number 4005, Adoption of Budget Statement to Be Term the Annual Appropriations Bill. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number 4005, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. Item 11B1, Resolution Number 2020-35, a resolution to set the 2020-2021 property tax request, and I will open that up for a public hearing. Rich, if there's anything you want to say regarding that, then, okay. Public hearing is opened up for Resolution Number 2020-35. Is there anybody here wanting to speak on the property tax request? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and take a motion. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Do I move on the ordinance and the resolution, just the resolution at this time? So, I will move to approve Resolution Number 2020-35.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 11B2, Approve an Additional 1% in the Base of Restricted Funds. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve 11B2.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 11B3, Approve Ordinance Number 4005, which is the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve item 11B3, the 2021 fiscal year budget.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any questions or comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment, and that is, this is one of the essential services, one of the essential things councils do, pass a budget, set the amount of taxes for people, and I want to just highlight the item that we had in our packet. It's a pie chart that lists where that tax money goes, and the first one, on an average home in Bellevue, one that fits my home, just under $150,000 valuation, $259 of that, or 30% goes to pay for our police department. I think that's a big bargain. I don't know where you can go. You probably can't even get service from a private organization or even one of the systems that you set up on your house for $259 a year, where you have police on-call 24 hours a day, round the clock. That seems a pretty good value. Fire, our fire department now fully professionalized in this budget, costs us $129 per each household in Bellevue on average for that valuation of a house, 15% of our budget. For parks and recreation, 5% of the budget, or $38, you have access to all the parks in Bellevue for an entire year with no additional cost. Then, planning permits and code is 2% of the budget in that pie chart, or $14 for those services, and all of the administration and other services, $147 or $147. And all of the administration and other services, a hundred and forty-seven dollars, or seventeen percent of the budget. And as I think of what you could get for those amounts, those amounts, when we pay them in property tax, seem a lot. But I think they are, when you break them down into those departments, about the amount that some, some of us pay for coffee. So, I think we're getting a pretty good value, even though we don't like to pay taxes, and I just wanted to point out that pie chart and the percentages. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that perspective. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Rich Seaverston, our finance director, and Marcy Horton, in the finance department, for all the work that they did in bringing this budget forward. We had meetings, uh, council, president, Preister, Councilman Burns, and I met with, uh, Mr. Risto and Mayor Hike, in regards to the budget and what we brought forward here, I think it's a great budget. We did a lot of annexations, and that annexations are really allowing the city to move forward. It was the right thing to do, so, but I want to acknowledge Rich for his hard work and his staff for putting everything together and bringing it forward. Thank you.
I will second that. Any more comments? Okay, we have a motion by Preister, second by Welch, to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A. Ordinance number four zero zero six, to allow for statutory changes and revisions to be incorporated into several sections of the city code, which have been affected by or generated by legislative changes, and to add or change legis, legislative citations. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero zero six, an ordinance to amend or revise certain ordinances which has been affected by or generated by legislative changes, and to add or change legislative citations.
Thank you, that was the first reading, the second reading and public hearing will be September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, there are none this evening. Item fifteen, fifteen A, num, resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-six, master fee schedule, um, Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that we lay this item over until our next meeting on September fifteenth.
Second.
So we have a motion by Preister, second by Cook, to, uh, table this resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-six until our next regular scheduled meeting. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two zero dash thirty-eight, authorizing the mayor to sign the annual year-end certification of city street superintendent form for twenty twenty, verifying Robert Joseph Riggs as the city street superintendent from January one, twenty twenty, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, that we approve fifteen B.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, any questions or comments? I just have a question, how come that skipped from resolution thirty-six to thirty-eight? Is that right? Okay.
There are different ord, uh, resolutions out there, so they're just not in order here.
Okay, just so you say it's right, that's good. Uh, motion by Cook, second by Welch, uh, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the addendum to the original contract with DIY holding company LLC, increasing the original contract for twenty twenty concrete projects by a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen A.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Preister, to approve sixteen A. Any questions or comments? Councilman Shannon? Yeah, Jim, did you get some answers for me on this?
Yeah, let me have Dean come up and sweep the.
Turn your mic, oh, there you go. It's got a short in it, I think. And Dean, just so you understand what I was asking, uh, the write-up for us to look at, to evaluate this item, uh, was very confusing. It says because of a playground in Two Springs and eighty-eight requirements, we're having to spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand more on Harland Drive, and the two just didn't seem related. And the work on Harland, as I understand it, was completed over the last two weeks, but yet we're coming here today to ask for approval, so I just asked for clarification, what are we doing and how are these items related?
Uh, some of the confusion behind that is due to, uh, public works working remotely. As far as Harland Drive goes, yes, it became necessary to do a lot of the repairs there. Street department kind of found out late that they weren't going to be able to address things. So, we added it on, knowing that we were, that we were under budget on our resurfacing project by over two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So, as, as far as the order of getting it done, and I understand your concern with that, it, it was just a bunch of moving parts at the same time when we weren't able to coordinate, uh, the way we would normally do in normal times.
Okay, and what does the playground have to do with all that?
Uh, the playground, um, it was getting put in, and then we got a report that ADA upgrades needed to occur. That included curb ramps around the perimeter of the, of the playground that we had to address. So, typically for a single ADA ramp, you're looking at maybe about nine hundred to a thousand dollars a piece. So, it, it was significant enough where I felt that I, it should be added to the cover sheet as well. Harland Drive took the vast majority of that.
Okay, but in the future, you feel like we can rest assured that projects will come to the council before they're completed?
Yes, it, it was just the situation.
That's what I was looking for tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, we have a motion by Stinson, second by Preister, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with AVI to provide professional engineering services for the emergency operations center in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion to approve sixteen B.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Councilman Shannon? Okay, in the pictures of what we were shown in here, we're shown where our EOC room is gonna grow up, it's gonna get new furniture, it's getting a new layout, it's getting all kinds of new things. This appears to be one piece of the puzzle here, what is the total cost of what we're doing?
So, um, they are kind of all in pieces, and a lot of it will fall under FEMA, uh, funding for COVID-related items that we will get reimbursement for on the backend through the CARES Act. Um, our main focus right now is the technology in that room, because that was our biggest issue during the protests, um, that were happening and, um, the COVID-nineteen situation. So, our main goal right now, if we could get anything accomplished, would be the technology, uh, which is this AVI part. The furniture and stuff we're hoping to bring before you, um, it's a joint effort between legal, because we're monitoring the CARES Act and FEMA part of it, and the community development director and other people involved in the EOC process. Um, so we're hoping that some of the other pieces start following in place, like the furniture, those sorts of things, to make it more user-friendly. But our main goal right now is the technology, and that's why we brought that to your attention first.
So we're gonna get the AVI drops where there's no furniture right now?
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that, this is really just kind of that, that first step in the technological thing, get them in, do some of that engineering, um, and some of the, the screen tech, um, that realistically we could use right now if nothing else changed.
Do we not have a place we can get this money and just get the whole thing accomplished? Rich?
I don't know if Rich was probably prepared for that question, um, I don't think we went and looked in the budget at all. Jim, do you have anything to add? You were in those meetings.
No, we're tying this back to the CARES Act, so it's, uh, and I think, go back to your other question about, are we dropping in the AVI without the furniture in place? That won't impact what we do with the furniture, so a lot of this AVI is gonna be on the wall, so it's not gonna affect where you're on, on the flooring and like, and the setup of the room, but the money truly ties back to the CARE Act and the money that comes through that, so that's where we're looking to get our funding from.
Okay, so not FEMA then? Not FEMA? CARES, right?
You run all that through the FEMA portal, sorry. Um, I'm stuck on the FEMA portal and other matters, um, so yes, you run all that through the same portal, though.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Total cost, I believe, was, my, if, correct me if I'm wrong, between a hundred and fifty and two hundred by the time we're done, something like that?
That's probably the max on that, that'd be correct.
Okay.
We should be able to find that pretty easy.
And covered by the CARES Act?
Correct.
So any more questions on that?
By Prester, please vote.
Did that mean you had to spend it before December thirty-first?
All voted yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement for the leasing of certain properties at Hayworth Park. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve item sixteen C.
Second.
And I will move to amend it. Motion by Prester, second by Cook, and then we got a motion by Shannon to amend. As passed out tonight, all the changes are in the new copy of the lease that you received when you got here tonight. Let's go second on the amendment, too.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Shannon, second by Welch, so any questions on the amendment? Is seen tonight. Okay, uh, motion by Shannon, second by Welch, to amend, as, uh, as the written copy states. Any questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, and we have a motion by Prester, second by Cook, to approve the lease as amended. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Uh, do we have any questions on those reports? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I, on the administration report, it lists insurance under the administration, and I just want to comment that the city employees' health insurance claims have flattened out, and I think, uh, a large amount of credit for that is to our employee wellness program. We've invested in it, our city employees are operating with it, and I would, just want to congratulate the city employees for helping to flatten that cost for the city, especially after we just passed our budget. So, the encouragement that I would like to send out to our employees is for each one to teach one. And I would encourage each of our employees who is doing the additional work in the employee assistance program to partner up with their fellow employees, and to show them what benefits they're getting, and encourage them to do the same thing. So, if we double next year, we can cut our claims, and it's not just about the budget, it's about the wellness of our employees. So, I, I want to salute our wellness program, but also all of our employees who've done an excellent job in taking advantage of it and then cutting costs in our insurance premiums. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any more comments? I would just add, if you haven't read those reports, um, you know, reading through, um, the city of Bellevue is doing a fabulous job, every department, um, they're just good reports, and it's, it feels good to read those reports, all the way from, you know, the administration, things going on, our community development, uh, we've got projects happening, our public works are, they're getting a lot of work done this year, um, and obviously the finance, uh, got us in really good shape, like Don mentioned earlier, we're, we're, we're well-funded and got a little bit of extra that we can put in reserves, so, um, it's all looking good, and it doesn't happen without all of our city employees, so, just, uh, again, thank you for that. Mr. Mayor? Yep. I would offer a motion to adjourn Seindine, so that we could hold our reception for the police chief at this time. We're gonna be here a while on the next two issues, so, better respect for the audience. I guess motion fails? Bye. So eighteen is closed session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I move that the city council go into a closed session this time for the protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session is litigation updates. The following individuals will be included in the litigation updates during the closed session. Mayor Rusty Hike, Jim Risto, Bob Stinsons, Paul Cook, Don Prester, Thomas Burns, Kathy Welch, Bree Robbins, Heller Vaek, Tony King, Susan Cluthy, Mark Albert, Tammy Palm, and Daryl Coolman, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion by Welch, second by Cook, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, at this time, I'll have Heather Vaek come speak briefly prior to the vote, as she is representing the city in these litigation matters that are subject to closed session.
Council members, the topics to be discussed in closed session will be litigation updates involving pending litigation matters that Councilmember Pat Shannon has against the city. Um, because I need to discuss these items confidentially with my clients, it would be unethical to discuss these matters in front of Councilman Shannon, um, and I need to advise my client separately, therefore he's been excluded from the closed session. Thank you.
Okay. So, any other comments, questions? Motion by Welch, second by Cook, to go into closed session, please vote.
We have five yes votes and one abstention. Abstention was by Mr. Shannon.
Okay, thank you. It is now six forty-eight. Uh, we will go into closed session, closed session will take place in the EOC room upstairs. So all those members announced, please head there. Stinson to come out of closed session, so do we have any discussion on that? And actually, I want to state the time, it's seven oh eight that we are out. Any discussion on that? Please vote.
Five yes votes and one abstention with Mr. Shannon abstaining.
Okay, and it's still seven oh eight, so we're back in open session now. And we are at eleven A. Ordinance for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four zero zero four, request to rezone lots one through three, block fifty-five, city of Bellevue from BGM dash OTO to RG dash fifty dash OTO. Applicant city of Bellevue, location is twenty-two twenty-one Main Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero zero four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, is provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. is provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about twenty-two twenty-one Main Street, more particularly described in Section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Okay. And, thank you. And do we have anybody that wants to recuse themselves? Oh.
Mr. Shannon?
Uh, we'll, we'll get a motion first?
No.
Okay. Mr. Shannon?
Councilman Shannon? At this point, Mayor, I am going to invoke City Code two dash seventy-one. I would like the minutes to reflect that I am opposed to this action for the following reasons. Each of you have been advised that you have a conflict and should recuse yourselves. I'm reminding you of that. But I object to the action of the city council tonight because Chapter thirty-one, Appendix A, Article ten, Section ten dot zero two of the Bellevue City Ordinance governs appeals before the Board of Adjustments. And when the Board of Adjustments is pending, it stays all further actions on the item. The city has violated this stay three times. And the action that is contemplated tonight is fruit of the poisonous tree because the Planning Commission meeting action was improper. The first reading was improper, the second reading was improper, and the vote tonight will be improper. So for these reasons, I object and protest the actions of the city council here tonight. The city attorney can advise you what the city wants you to do, but each of you is individually responsible for your actions from here on. I recuse myself as the property owner and because I will not participate in the illegal vote you're being asked to make tonight. Thank you.
Good. Objection noted. So we can go ahead and take a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve ordinance number four zero zero four.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Approve ordinance four zero zero four. Any discussion? Councilman Preister?
Mayor, just a, a response. Uh, Councilman Shannon made a statement, and his statement was not a statement of fact, but a statement of his opinion. And that opinion will finally be decided in court. I don't happen to hold that opinion, but it is just his opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. All right. If there's no other comments or questions, please vote. Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister.
We have five yes votes and Mr. Shannon being absent.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to adjourn. Please vote.
Second. If it lets me.
Susan, make sure the minutes reflect that I returned.
All voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Looks like there's a party right now. Please, if you are a council member, do not talk about city business this evening from here on out. Thank you.